Okay, item number five, do we have any citizens signed up to speak this morning? David Morgan, Mr. Morgan, come on up and get you three minutes. Appreciate you getting up to speak.
Hopefully it won't take three minutes. Good morning Commissioners, I'm so happy to be here today and talk to y'all just for a moment. My concern is about the elections. I've been speaking with my Commissioner, Mr. Geesler about it and everything. But what I'm really concerned, and we've got some dates already on the calendar to meet and address our issues out in the show community. But what I want to speak to you about today is what I'm concerned about. When I started looking into all this, I can't believe that we can vote anywhere we want. I don't understand that. That just don't make sense to me. I can't wrap my mind around it. I'm sixty-six years old and we always went to the precinct where we're registered to vote. They looked our name up on a list and made sure we were registered and that we were in the proper place to vote. And I think that's the way it ought to be. I downloaded the election code and I don't see in there, I've read it, maybe I'm not that smart. Maybe I'm not a lawyer, but I read through it and I don't see where it says you can vote anywhere you want. So I don't know where this come from, but I'm opposed to it. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Do we have any others signed up to speak this morning? Okay, we'll move on to item number six. And we're going to acknowledge that sealed bids received for the construction of five homes with the Home Grant Program. Bids will be reviewed and awarded on February thirteenth in Commissioners Court. Have both of these, we have, do have two sealed bids. These are for the, the General Land Office, the, the home program that we do. We built, last year, we built five homes in Karnes County. It's really an incredible process. They, from, from dirt to, to finish forty-five days. I'm, I'm an old builder, so that's, I mean, it's really, really incredible. So we'll go ahead and open these two bids that we've received.
It says reconstruction.
Sorry?
It says reconstruction.
Reconstruction of five homes. They tear down the, the old homes and they build brand new homes. Knife ain't as sharp as it should be, been cutting hay bales. Okay, this is the first one. And it is from RM Quality Construction LLC. And their total bid for the five identified homes to be I think this is the company that built for a total bid amount of, for the five homes, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece. For a total bid of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is good for ninety days, but we will award hopefully on the thirteenth of February.
That's the only one you got, only got two.
Say it again?
You have two.
Two bids, yes. Second one is from James W. Turner Construction. And this bid is for three of the homes, a hundred and seventy-three thousand eighty dollars. And the other two, one eighty-six, five eighty, for a total bid amount of eight hundred and ninety-two thousand four hundred dollars. James W. Turner Construction. Okay, after those, then we will do the awards on February thirteenth, Commissioners Court.
Who administers the grant?
Who's the grant administrator?
Yes.
Langford, Lacy Koska with Langford Community Administration. You're welcome. All right, item number seven, acknowledge in memory of Ms. Peggy Haley, a seven thousand five hundred dollar donation was made to the Runkie Public Library from the LB Haley Family Limited Partnership. Is Alicia here? I didn't see her here either. All right. Thank you to the Haley Family Limited Partnership. Nice donation, very nice.
The Haley Family does this every year. Thank you.
Item number eight, discuss approved, disapproved ECS Southwest LLP Geo-Technical Engineering Report. ECS Project Number Two Zero One Seven Five Zero for Karnes County Annex Building located at two hundred West Calvert Avenue, Karnes City, Texas. Commissioner Dubnyk.
Judge, Court, on November the third, we received a report from ECS and Jeff Chapman is here to try to explain it to us. Reading this last night, I was surprised about how hard the ground was below there with the calcareous top of material.
Chapman?
How are you?
Well, how are you?
How are y'all? So I've got, and I think we have the ECS item and then two other items, right?
Yeah.
So, and I don't know how, I kind of wanted to talk about both ECS and the Thornton Tomasetti Annex Reports for y'all this morning, I think both items on the agenda. So if we could, I'll start with that. And I've got good news. May not sound like great news because there's still some work to do, but I'm here to save y'all several hundred thousand dollars. As you may recall, and I'm gonna go back to a little bit of history. As you may recall, when I was first contacted about the Annex Building post the litigation, we had received, the county had received some bids for foundation repair because of the cracks and stuff in the walls. Olshan, for example, had a bid for nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. And, and my, my advice was, hold on a second, before we go spend a million bucks, we kind of need to know what is happening and why we're gonna spend that kind of money. And so based on my recommendation, the county voted to approve ECS as a geotechnical consultant and Thornton Tomasetti as a structural consultant to come and evaluate the building. They've now done that. I was supposed to be down here on January ninth, the last meeting, and I got really sick. I feel like I might have had norovirus, like food poisoning, I was out for a day, it was terrible. The good news about all that was the very next day, on January tenth, Thornton Tomasetti issued a letter of report to me that I'm here to talk to y'all about on the Annex Building. And I'll provide this to y'all by email as soon as the meeting's over with. But they took the ECS evaluation, which through their geotechnical borings, which was a phase two recommendation after Thornton Tomasetti did their initial walkthrough, they wanted to evaluate both the movement of the building and also the soils beneath it. And what Thornton Tomasetti has found through ECS' borings in their investigation was that the problems with the exterior of the, of the Annex Building is basically due to differential movement. And they found that the select fill material that was placed as the base for the foundation in the original construction of that building has too high of a clay content, which basically gives it the expansive characteristics that most native soils around here have. And so the original construction wasn't done in accordance with the original design. And the original design didn't necessarily specify the appropriate levels of mitigation for the PI soils. Now, the good news is, is that Thornton Tomasetti, through ECS' evaluations, has found that there's not excessive groundwater pushing up into the building itself. That the drainage is actually the problem here. And the fact that we have a negative slope on the, on the edge of the building and we have water pushing into the building from drainage from this building towards the Annex. That all that water is pooling in around the exterior of the building and causing the soils which should have been removed and replaced with select fill, causing the soils that exist there to rise and to swell and shrink. And so after all that evaluation, Thornton Tomasetti also measured the interior deflection of the building and has found that there is a slight rise from original as constructed elevations and as designed elevations in the middle of the building. And there's significant dips around the edges of the building, which shows, according to Thornton, according to Thornton Tomasetti, that we still need to evaluate whether there's some sort of plumbing or other leak beneath the foundation in around the middle of the building where the old JP office used to be, which had that weird kind of leak that came up from this, from the floor for a long time. They want to do, they're recommending some evaluation there to determine if there's an actual leak in some sort of plumbing or system. But we have checked that once before and didn't find anything. So it's still kind of an unsolved concern. However, at the edges of the building, what Thornton Tomasetti is saying is that we don't have structural failures of the building itself. The foundation is performing as intended. What we had is inadequate drainage allowing moisture around the exterior of the building and on the sides of the building, which is causing the, the cracking in the walls that we're seeing and causing the separation around the sidewalks that we're seeing, and it's basically due to those soils. And so what they're recommending is, is that the county engage a civil engineering consultant to reevaluate and redesign drainage mitigation measures around the outside of the building to prevent water from continuing to come and pool in and around the building. And that should relieve the swelling of the soils because it won't experience as much seasonal moisture. It's not groundwater pushing up, it's all surface water that's draining into and seeping into the soils. Once, once that recommendation is met and performed, we should be able to repair the inside damages that we're seeing in the clerk's office, for example, in the 4H office, that which we can, once we can stabilize the outside walls, we can repair the inside and not expect to see a significant of movement in the future. Although they do, they do indicate that we may see some of that just from seasonal moisture, but it's not, it's not a structural concern with the building. It's mostly aesthetic and it should be repairable once we address the drainage. They do main, they do recommend that obviously all exterior joints around the concrete and the sidewalks be maintained with sealant to prevent moisture from seeping in beneath them. And they do recommend, because of the elevation survey, that we perform leak investigation for any underground plumbing work to, to evaluate whether we're having rise from the soils beneath the building due to intrusion from a leak. But they do say, in summary, no repair of the foundation and/or soil remediation work is recommended at this time. Performing the above mentioned scope, which I've just gone through with you, they say should mitigate further foundation movements by restricting the water infiltration into the subgrade soils below the building foundation. And that will minimize future foundation movement. So the investigation, according to Thornton Tomasetti, is finished now. They've made those recommendations and I think the county should probably move forward with retaining a civil engineer to evaluate the drainage around the building and engage that entity to design drainage repairs and then construct those so that we can move the water away from the building as opposed to draining towards it.
That's great.
And that should be significantly less than nine hundred and forty thousand, I would imagine.
Jeff, that, that kind of explains the three, there was four holes that were drilled, but three of them have showed that to be, that fill. The only one that dud is back in that corner by the JP office, so. Okay, so, and it showed to be real heavy soil.
Yeah, it's, right. And, and so that's, that's what they found, that they did, they did identify in this report, and, and like I said, I'll be emailing this to y'all when this meeting's over. But they, they did identify the differences, differences in the, in the reported borings. But ultimately, they found, they found drainage to be the primary concern and there's not a foundation failure.
And you notice on this, what would it be, the east side of the building? Where it's got that rock in the channel with water, not underneath.
What is, what is the perimeter drop on it? You said the middle is high and the perimeter drop, if we take care of all of the drainage issues, then we still have the perimeter drop on it, don't we?
Yeah, they said that the let me, let me find it here in this report. Oh, here we go, sorry. The, the swell test showed that, um, the swelling values ranged from point eight to one point seven percent, and that the soils that are near the surface can provide nine, six to nine KSF, which I don't understand what, what that means. They then talk about the data and the elevations, and they said that the survey data show that the entire site elevations across the entire site are one to two feet lower than what was originally designed, and that they attribute to the improper placement of the fill material. So I, and I, I feel like they identified, I might not be looking in the right spot in this report, I feel like they did identify that we have one inch of elevated measurements in the middle of the building as compared to the outside, but I'm not seeing it right here when you ask, now that you've asked me that direct question.
Yeah, no problem, I'm sorry. I just wanted to know because if we, if we do fix all the drainage and all that, we still have the issue of the drop on the perimeter, unless that's gonna start moving.
Well, I, yeah, I think, yeah, I don't, I don't know if the, I don't know that the building will rise back up once that drainage is removed, I think the idea that, what they're saying in this report is that once you correct that drainage, you're still gonna have some, somewhat differential elevation movement, like there'll still be the rise in the middle of the building due to what they believe is, is soil swelling. If that leak were detected and stopped, if it is in fact a leak, then the presumption would be that that would shrink the soils once they dried out, and the building would settle, and then you could repair the inside.
I got you.
I think that the idea is, now you have what you have, as far as the deflection in the exterior of the building, and then once you repair the drainage, it stabilizes and doesn't expose itself to additional seasonal movement, which would then, it'll leave it kind of as a cap like that, so the outside's a little bit lower, but it won't continue to move, and it won't continue to show the cracking in and around the doorways and the walls. So. But I don't, I mean, I can ask them that question, and we can certainly talk to a civil engineer to find out if we would expect soils, because the civil would work with, with the ECS report as well and evaluate it. We could ask the civil if that would, if the drainage would correct the condition and cause the building to, to slightly rise back up, which would suggest that we would want to wait to repair the inside damage until the building is stabilized. Because we don't want to start repairing cracks if the building is going to continue to move, we want to stabilize the building and then fix the inside.
Because usually the way they measure, they'll go from the center out to the ends like that, anything within a half inch difference doesn't matter, but anything over that, it's kind of looking at it to be repaired.
I feel, I feel like what I read was it was an inch higher in the middle than the exterior, I'm just not finding it when I'm skimming it.
The only reason I'm asking Judge is because we still might be looking at repairing the foundation afterward.
Possibly, if, 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 what the report is saying is, if we can stop the water that's in the middle, the swelling, potentially the middle of the building will level back down. To see that, but the foundation is, it sounds like the foundation is doing what it's supposed to do.
The foundation is doing what it's supposed to do, the, the question is this mysterious leak in the middle of the building, which.
How would we find it, like with a tunnel under it, or would they drill a hole?
Well, we've done, if I remember correctly, we've done a hydrostatic pressure test on the plumbing system to try to find out if it was a plumbing leak, had the initial round of investigations in the building, and we couldn't find anything. There was some, there were some theories at the time that it could have been potentially some sort of condensation leak, but that was looked into, and that was also not found to be evident or obvious. So I really don't know what to recommend as far as a test to determine how to figure out if there is a leak. I can go back and ask Thornton Thomasetti if they have recommendations and, and let y'all know and bring that back to you, or have an email and y'all can consider it in a, in a future meeting, and get some recommendations, but I'm at a loss because I feel like we've done that in the past and didn't find anything.
Yeah, it's, it's super sloppy underneath there whenever they dug, and I don't see Renee in here, but when they dug that tunnel on the back of the building, I mean, it just, it, there's water back there, crazy.
That, that, uh, ring that's, that's there? It wouldn't have anything, because remember when I think when y'all were doing, doing testing before, y'all drilled right outside by that deck?
Right.
Or something.
Right.
Right, Judge, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was running a lot of water, I believe, because they were pretty wet in there.
Right, and that's where the water is most frequently accumulating, and there, I think the recommendation would be to continue to add additional drainage mitigation measures to push it away. And that's what's, that along with the water along the sidewalk in the street pushing into the building is causing the movement around the edge of the building. I'm, I don't know how to figure out what's going on in the middle.
Does Thomas City have, they have civil engineers?
Yes, they do, yeah.
Because I read in their, in their summary that they would, they would try to, you know, if court wanted them, they would continue trying to remediate the problem.
Right, and, and, and I can go back and, and ask them what they would recommend as far as testing for a leak identification, and also ask them to give us a proposal to consider for civil design work to move the mitigation and bring that to y'all for consideration. We are under no obligation to use Thornton Thomasetti, but since they've done the investigation, it wouldn't hurt to ask them to provide a proposal. I'll also just let you know as it relates to the annex, that, um, with respect to their fees, um, and I did get a recent bill from them on the eighteenth and, um, have that with me. They have spent a lot more time and money than they expected to, and they've reduced their fees in accordance with the not-to-exceed amounts that we had in our proposals. So they've been, um, good without any kind of prompting from me reminding them of that, they've been good about recognizing that obligation. And so the total, um, not-to-exceed amount for phase two of the annex, which is the phase we are just ending, was ninety-five hundred dollars. And on this January eighteenth invoice they just sent me, it shows that their AR balance was cut by sixty-eight hundred bucks, and that the total balance for the receivables is ninety-five hundred dollars. So they've reformed their billing to reduce it to the amounts. And I'd been holding some bills for, for the meeting on the ninth or today because they had exceeded that not-to-exceed, but they came back and entered them after canceling, after I missed last meeting, and they've reformed that bill down. So they've honored their obligation to the county, that's what they've said, which is very nice.
They'll make it up on that civil engineer.
Well, they've, they've, they've written off about twenty-something thousand dollars in fees on this, on this amount based on the bids they gave us originally, which is pretty significant given the estimate, so.
Yeah. Any other discussion from the court?
Will the pizometers, will they still stay in place or will that, uh?
Uh, the pizometers, I think, will be removed now. Um, I haven't spoken to Jason Castro at ECS to find out when that's scheduled to, to happen, but with this last report from Thornton Thomasetti, I think the need for those is gone. And so they'll come out and remove those, um, and I'll let y'all know when that's gonna happen, or I'll let Renee know when that's gonna happen.
Judge? If I can, can, do we need to go ahead and, uh, I guess, ask Jeff to get a recommendation and with the proposal or however you want, however you want to do it?
We do need to do that, but it needs to be on, on a separate agenda item, um, on, on the next agenda, because this is just a discussion to disapprove, uh, the report. And, you know, if you want to approve the report, uh, I, I think discussion is fine, there's nothing to approve on it. But we will need to have an action item the next meeting to explore civil engineer to address drainage problems.
Would number nine cover that on rec, mitigate foundation?
It looked like it could, uh, on recommendation mitigate, mitigate foundation. If there's no other discussion on item number eight, then we'll move to item number nine, any other discussion on eight?
No, sir.
Item number nine is to discuss slash take possible action on recommendations to mitigate foundation of Karnes County Annex located at two hundred West Calvert Avenue, Karnes City, Texas. Commissioner Dubnyk, now I believe you can. It's mitigating the foundation.
Based on the report from, uh, Thomasetti, and on what Jeff has told us, recommend mitigate the foundation, I, I would like for us to allow Jeff Chapman to go ahead and try to get, talk with Thomasetti and see if we can get a civil or what he would take to for a proposal for, for civil engineer work. Or Judge, how do you want to word it?
Motion to, uh, let's see. Motion to allow Chapman Firm to negotiate civil engineering with Thornton Thomasetti.
That's my motion.
I'll second. Okay, motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, anybody opposed? Okay, and Mr. Chapman, I think that you've got number two. Item number ten is discuss slash take possible action of Karnes County Jail located at five hundred East Wall Street, Karnes City, Texas. Report of Thornton Thomasetti, evaluation of the jail and recommendations per, Commissioner Dubnyk.
I'm at the jail and, uh, walking around looking at it, and it has a lot of issues with the foundation and the concrete pulling away from the Sally Port. Sidewalks are all uneven, uh, even in where you're driving to the Sally Port's uneven. So, that's, we had, I think, Jeff, you, you had a, somebody come in and do a, kind of like a survey of everything?
Yeah. So, uh, again, Thornton Thomasetti was retained by the county to do an evaluation of the jail, to really do two things. They were first going to evaluate the existing distressed conditions at the jail, where we have, uh, several doors inside, both the detention side and the administrative side that don't function and close properly. We've got all kinds of issues at the Sally Port, the retaining wall has some vertical cracks in it, the concrete of the Sally Port is pulling away, the gates don't operate, the fence doesn't, uh, isn't holding up, and so there's a lot of issues in the back. And Thornton Thomasetti came in to look at that, and they also came in to evaluate the existing foundation design and the structure of the building to determine whether the additional forty-six beds could be constructed as originally intended, um, and to make sure that the foundation and the design for the foundation is adequate for that, for that expansion project. And, and, um, again, Thornton Thomasetti broke down their proposal and scope of services for the county into two phases. The first phase, they divided into phase one A and one B. One A, just to remind y'all, was to perform that original engineering investigation to evaluate the movement and the structural concerns of the building. Phase two was to perform a peer review of the construction drawings and the existing conditions to determine the effectiveness and the availability of the expansion. In, in mid, early December, December eleventh, Thornton Thomasetti issued their report for the structural condition assessment of phase one. And I've provided this, I think, to the commissioners of the court already, but I'm happy to provide, uh, by email another copy, um, so that everyone can have it, if you don't already. But they identified in that report, um, you know, observations of distress at various locations, some of which we knew about, some of which, you know, have been in existence since we litigated the jail's problems with HMC and the design team way back when, and some of which have manifested itself most recently. They identified the broken, um, concrete retainers in the crawl space, which we've known about. They've identified the pooling of water in the crawl space with, which we've known about. And then they went through and they identified all of the signs of distress at the exterior cracks, I mean, exterior sidewalks with the cracking, the Sally Port, the fence. They've identified a few things that they've noticed. For example, the fence at the Sally Port was not constructed as designed, it was supposed to be embedded into the retaining wall, and they embedded it into the concrete adjacent to the Sally Port. And so as we're seeing the entire back of the jail move due to the soil movement, we're seeing that fence move and fail, the gates are the same way, and so they've made some recommendations with respect to, um, some of the Sally Port and building exterior. Again, very similar to the annex, the, the native soils and around the building are causing problems. They did investigate the foundation, and have identified that there's not structural failures of the foundation itself, but what we're seeing is seasonal moisture causing potentially some of the movement inside the jail, causing the doors to shift and not function properly. And they've identified that most of the problems in the back and the exterior are relating to inadequate soil prep and construction practices originally. And so we kind of knew that HMC didn't do a very good job for us on the jail, and now we've got additional confirmation of things that they've not done well that have resulted in problems. And so with respect to their phase one recommendations, I'll just run through these, they bullet pointed several items for the county to consider, as far as this and the next steps. But for the exterior of the building, they have, um, suggested that the pavement differential movement is the problem with the Sally Port and the area back there, and they've recommended that we engage a geotechnical engineer to investigate the soils within the vehicle driveway to determine soil properties and recommend soil remediation and mitigation efforts. Very similar to the annex, they'd like to have ECS or some other geotech come out and do some additional investigation into the exact composition of the soils to know what recommendations to make with respect to that repair. On the fence and the, um, operation of the vehicular and pedestrian access gates, Thornton Thomasetti is recommending that we isolate the east and west fences and the access gates from the pavement, because it's, the, the fact that they're tied into the pavement is causing, because the pavement and the, everything is moving because of the soils, is causing the gates and the fences to fail. So what they're suggesting is that we provide, uh, grade beams supported on micro piles endowed into the existing structure to stabilize the fence and the gate so that if the soils continue to move in and around the pavement, that that won't affect the operation of the security fencing in the gates, since that's one recommendation they've made with respect to correcting those issues. They're also recommending the removal of the improperly installed Southern Sally Port perimeter fence and reinst, reinstalling that in embedded metal plates above the retaining wall so it becomes stable and won't continue to, to suffer from movement and, and deficiencies. Once that, um, stabilization, stabilization of the pavement and the differential movement is evaluated and recommended, they're also recommending that we simply replace the overhead door after that stability has been established, and so we need to do a little more investigative work before we do that, but they've put us on a path towards the potential repair for that. They are also recommending that for respect to the gutter, downspouts, and the deformation of the drainage system above it and down the building, that we, that we remove and replace the bottom portion of the downspouts that are in contact with the driveway pavement to allow those things to push water away from the building. They're recommending that we perform an investigation of the conditions of the precast soil retainers in the back of the building, this is the, in the crawl space where those soil retainers are broken, to determine if they're actually functioning, and to, and make sure that they're not allowing moisture to come in and pool in and around the edge of the building. And then, and then they want to do further recommendations on the retaining wall, they found the retaining wall is not in fact failing, but what we're seeing with the retaining wall is vertical cracking associated with both concrete shrinkage and some soil instability behind the wall. But the wall is not moving, the wall is not failing, but they are concerned with moisture getting through the wall because of those cracks, and have recommended that we use GPR surveying to evaluate the placement of the steel reinforcement in the wall to make sure that the steel's not exposed, because if the steel's exposed and it's getting wet, it could rust and ultimately, over the long term, not immediately, but over the long term fail. They want to make sure that condition is intact and the, and the wall can continue to function as intended.
So we don't need to move the fence, we don't, we don't need to attach the, the fence yet to the retaining wall until we figure that the retaining wall is.
Right, they want to do, they want to do in a geotechnical investigation both at the Sally Port to identify what soils are beneath it causing all the movement, also at and behind the retaining wall to make sure that no modifications are required. So they're making recommendations, for example, the, the steel beam or the beam to, to stabilize the fences and the gates. That's a recommendation they feel confident that we should do, but I do think it'd be prudent to make sure we understand more about the soils and mitigation efforts so that we don't have, we can deal with everything at once, basically, deal with the soils and the pavement and the movement there before we go ahead and fix the gates. So it's a bit of a process. Um, I think we theoretically, based on these recommendations, could have someone design and fix the gates and the fences, because they are saying that rather than embedding it into the retaining wall as originally designed, to build a beam, embed it into the beam and attach that to the retaining wall, so you have a more stable surface for the fencing and the gates to be resting on, so when they, they won't move and therefore affect the operation. Because the reason they're not functioning is because all the soils has moved, and so now it's all off kilter. And then again, like the annex, they require, they're, they're suggesting that we do things to eliminate the negative flow of water into the building. The mow strips have a negative drainage displacement around the edge of the building, they want those to be removed and regraded so it pushes the water away from the building. And then provide and continue to maintain the sealants in and around the cracks of the sidewalk and the Sally Port and where the concrete joints are. That can be done. That can be done now, but it would need to be redone if we have to do concrete movement or concrete replacement in the back of the jail. As far as the interior goes, they do suggest that we perform a structural evaluation of the floor concrete slab to determine if the slab can accommodate the loading demands that are on it. But they, they suggest that non-destructive GPR testing is the appropriate way to do that. And if, and if they find through the GPR any concerns about steel reinforcement or placement of load bearing capacity, they would suggest a limited destructive exploratory opening in the concrete floor slab to confirm the size of the installed steel bars. Now, I think that the GPR would be the first step and limited destructive testing to confirm that the right size rebar was used to provide the stability required would be the second step to determine the structural capacity of the floor itself.
Jeff, is GPR, ground penetrating radar?
Radar.
Yes. Ground penetrating radar. It's a, it's a handheld device that basically X-rays the inside of the concrete and you can see where the re, you can see, you can often see where the rebar is. You can see like if it's placed properly in the sense that it's at the bottom of the concrete or properly elevated in the middle of the concrete based on the design. The challenge with GPR, in my experience, is that when rebar is like spliced together, it often misreads the size of the rebar. And so they want to be able to find, you know, a location where there's no splicing and joints of the rebar to be able to identify its location and size. And that's why they're making this potential recommendation for destructive testing. If they can't determine the number and the size of the gauge, they might need to go in and evaluate that because the, they want to make sure that if we're going to expand the jail, the original construction and the original design is appropriate for that. They did, they did say that in additional, in addition to that work with the GPR testing, that they would like to perform a structural capacity and deflection evaluation to determine the door functionality issue. They say that both the, the doors inside the jail area, which are encased in, you know, precast concrete and the doors in the administrative wing, which is just framed out with metal framing, both are experiencing similar problems. But for example, in the, in the detention area, the precast frame for the door is not showing any sign of distress. And so they believe that that's stable, but it's the movement beneath it that's allowing the door to shift a little bit and not work properly. And so they're, they're believing it's slight deflection from soils as opposed to a foundational issue, because the suspended, the suspended slab foundation that was designed is functioning properly and is not showing differential movement. And so that's a positive. But a floor elevation survey is being requested so they can go in and they can measure the deflection and find out how to best address the functionality of the doors, especially, you know, in the security detention area. And then, and then they feel that with this, with respect to the places where there's water intrusion in and around the building, that those are localized issues. It doesn't appear to be a systemic problem throughout the entire building, but there may be places where the building envelope has some sort of deficiency or compromise that is allowing water intrusion into the building. And so the recommendation for that is just to perform an assessment of the affected areas to identify the source of the water, basically find the leak and fix it, if, in, in plain English. And then to conduct an evaluation of the HVAC system to evaluate why there's additional condensation. And it may be a similar situation to the annex when we evaluated that system, there's too much humidity being pulled into the building because in the annex, we found originally, if you may recall, there were gaps between the walls and the roof that allowed excess outside air in, and so the humidity control wasn't working and it wasn't designed for that. So they want to evaluate the HVAC system to see why there's additional condensation and whether there's a humidity concern there. Those are the recommendations for the exterior and the interior. With respect to the foundation peers, which is important for the expansion side, what they said was that, that constructing the jail expansion with a similar foundation system as it's in place now is appropriate. So they found no problems with the foundation design or its function. And they said, however, they want to confirm that the appropriate materials, quality control and inspection and testing be performed so that we can avoid the potential that we have improper soils when we go ahead and construct the expansion of the jail. And so they want to make sure that basically things are washed more closely and done right this time.
How much money do we have left out of the, out of the settlement? $300,000, is that what we got? Do you remember? Tom? I think it was somewhere around $300,000.
I think it was $300,000.
What a mess. Commissioner?
Judge. I guess, you know, the general item at the end, it has, and recommendations presented. Is that enough to?
In a, in a action item, what's your recommendation?
So I think we need to do two things. I think we need to reach back out to Thornton Tomasetti and get a, get them to provide, similar to the annex, get them to provide a scope of work for a geotechnical evaluation of the Sally Port in the rear of the jail and then get a proposal from ECS to perform that work. And I'll, and if, if I'm authorized to do that, then I'll get that done and come back to y'all with those proposals and the scope of work for the geotechnical evaluation. And then I think that the second step would be to ask Thornton Tomasetti to, to provide the additional, a proposal for the additional surveys and engineering evaluation of the elevations of the interior, because I think they feel like they need that to be able to make permanent recommendations for the doorways. Once we have.
A million five.
A million five. Okay. So there's a million five budgeted. And, and I think in, in addition to performing those interior elevations, I'd like to find out from Thornton Tomasetti what they would like to do as far as next steps for phase two, which would be to evaluate and prepare the expansion side for potential construction drawings and see what, see what that, see what that would look like for the county. And I think that all I need to do is get authorization from y'all to do that. That doesn't require any kind of commitment monetarily. I'd come back with those proposals, hopefully in a month or so, from ECS and from Thornton Tomasetti to get us to a discussion about what the next steps are for the jail.
That should be your motion to authorize Chapman Firm and Jeff Chapman to negotiate, not negotiate, just, I guess, visit with Thornton Tomasetti and Geotech to provide a scope of work for going forward with the jail repair.
Judge, I'm going to, we go ahead and authorize Jeff Chapman to enter to discussions with Thornton Tomasetti for the recommendations that they have to correct the jail issues at this time and future issues.
I'll second. You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chapman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Item number 11, discuss, approve, disapprove, adjusting Dr. Joel Saldana, Karnes County Jail Medical Director's salary. Dr. Saldana has notified Karnes County Sheriff that he, that his requesting his salary, $20,000, be adjusted to the salary he receives for same services he provides as medical director for Livock County Jail, possibly $36,000. Commissioner Dubnik and Sheriff Villanueva.
Good morning, Commissioners Court. As y'all know, Dr. Saldana has been our medical doctor for the jail for years. He usually, when we need referrals, when we need an inmate to be taken to Otto Kaiser, he usually is the one that's there and makes decisions of what needs to happen. Okay? He does all our prescriptions for us. He comes here to the jail. If he has to see inmates here, he'll do it at the beginning of the month and very seldom does he do it or at the end of the month where we set it up with him. But he has been meeting with me and wanting to be, an increase on his, an adjustment on his salary. He also does Livock County. He started doing Livock County Sheriff's Office, doing, checking, working at their jail. And he met with me and, you know, wanted to, for me to present it to Commissioners Court and asking for an adjustment for his salary. I know at this time, we pay him $20,000 for the jail and EMS pays him, you know, a different salary. So that's why I'm here this morning.
We have budgeted $20,000. I, I'm not in favor of making salary adjustments in the middle of a budget year. I think Dr. Saldana is a pillar of the community and has been for a very, very long time and appreciate so much what he does for us. I, I just, I don't think that, that making, it almost feels like we're being held hostage and I, I don't, I don't think that's right. I'm not discounting the amount of work that Dr. Saldana does at the jail, but what we budgeted was $20,000 and to make a salary adjustment, you know, for him, who's the next one that we make a salary adjustment for?
Do you have another doctor in mind if Dr. Saldana decides to leave?
Not at this point.
The only issue we also have here is that it's not unforeseen or an emergency. And if we budgeted $20,000, we have to stay with that. We can probably revisit it during the next budget year, but.
Happy to do that.
But as of right now, it's not an emergency and it's not unforeseen.
Okay. I didn't, you know, I just thought I'd tell him I'd come and present it to Commissioners Court when he got with me.
Well, you know, isn't it kind of unforeseen that, well, I guess not, but it was same thing we did for the doctor for EMS, though it was unforeseen for, we forgot to put his benefits in and we made an adjustment for that. I was just wondering. But he approached me, did he write you a letter, Judge?
Not seen a letter from the doctor.
He's supposed to have sent you a letter, a court letter. But he, he, he reached out to me, that's why I put this on the agenda. Again, I understand what like the judge says, but nevertheless, you know, he's providing a service to our, to the jail.
I agree 100%. He's providing wonderful service for the jail.
I think he does a great job. I think it's worth it to, he, he told me that, he didn't ask for $36,000, $36,000 from Livock County, they offered it to him. And he said for a lot of years that he, when the county didn't have any money, that he didn't charge very much. And it kind of feels like this home county should match the, the payout. I think we ought to make a budget amendment and pay. If he walks out, we don't have anything.
And I know one of these days, this county's going to have culture shock when we start having to pay these medical directors and other doctors with that provide services, what they're actually going to start asking. Well, I'll just go ahead and, I just would like for us to make a move that we increase Dr. Saldana's salary from $20,000 to $36,000 and we could maybe use ARPA funds to match that to, to the budget time. So we reevaluate his thing at the budget.
I'll second you.
They've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed, unopposed to it? Motion fails. Item number 13, discuss, approve, disapprove, providing Karnes County Veterans Officer a vehicle to transport Karnes veterans to and from appointments out of town as needed. Furthermore, vehicles to be used for additional veterans business. Currently Karnes County Veterans Officer is using his own vehicle for veterans needing assistance to appointments and other veterans business. Commissioner Dubnik.
Judge, again, Don C, the veteran officer has been moving people around, taking veterans to different appointments. I can see the, the, maybe visiting the vehicle next budget year to see if that can do it, but I would like to authorize him, if the court would, some mileage or provide, or find a vehicle that he could take people in. Some of the guys, some of the veterans he takes are homeless. They don't, and some cannot call into a pickup or anything like that. So if anything, we could, we have the AgriLife pickup he could use, he's sitting there and just.
That, that, that vehicle is not fit for driving. That's the reason we got them a new one is because that had the, the board death wobble is what they called it. It's been repaired, it's supposed to go into surplus.
They told, the AgriLife told me it's still a decent one, so I don't care that maybe no more than we do. But nevertheless, if we could at least pay him mileage, so he can offset some of the cost, being he, he asked for an increase that time and we did, or wherever it was during budget year, it didn't happen.
We pay mileage out of, we pay, I think we pay the maintenance department. We don't have anything budgeted for it. There is a vehicle that was, Sheriff, are you still back there? The vehicle that we gave Karnes Wilson Juvenile, we still have. We still have that one? Are we using, is, is anybody using that one? Renee, you're not using it, are you?
They were gonna put it surplus, but it only makes, but it only run, they said 20 miles an hour, it just, it needs work.
Yeah.
But if we could at least give him mileage.
But where, where are you going to pull mileage out of?
Well, can we take the rest of your from the ARPA? I mean, or maybe at the end of the year, see what he does and we have to move his money around inside his budget. You're his budget officer and did you, you didn't put the mileage in for him?
Wasn't asked for.
Because he used to have a van and that was provided by, by the veterans, but you know that story.
You don't have an extra vehicle at the jail, do you? You don't have an extra vehicle at the jail, do you? Roden Briggs doesn't have an extra vehicle?
No.
We are fixing to, could be a plan on bringing the AgriLife surplus equipment, our vehicles, surplus. There's definitely something to do with this type without them following one, but they were planning on that one. It will rotate.
I'd like to see next year the county purchase a vehicle in the budget year to be checked out as needed for some of these people and instead of having to buy one permanent, just have one sitting there and you need to go to a, to a conference or something and your opportunity of vehicles available. That's what I'd like to see us to do next year in the budget year.
I don't think we ought to send them out in a limpa long vehicle to haul veterans in.
I agree.
We're going to bring the AgriLife surplus, the surplus, we pick from that, we'll pull that out. We should pitch this next, or next.
Does Adam have a question or maybe they could rotate or?
Should be possible. They will.
Send the vehicle that he has for surplus to a certified mechanic shop and when they fudge it through it, it would be good.
The, the AgriLife truck, Commissioner Dubnik said that if you give him, that's, that's a four door, four wheel drive, he's having problems getting in trucks, well then, you're not solving that problem with that. I, I think that that vehicle was repaired, to what extent, I don't know, but.
It's got 70 something thousand miles on it.
I know.
They said it needs batteries and, and after that, I don't know what it needs.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't work for disabled veterans.
According to, if you like, if you like this, it's owed to have a vehicle evaluated to be a balance. Do I want to?
If it ain't good enough for you, well, it'd be good enough for somebody else. If it ain't good enough for you, well, it'd be good enough for somebody else.
Nah, I don't think so.
Do we have light, vehicles there since we're Roden Bridge and it's, you know, we usually get four, four wheel drives and stuff? Do we have some light duty vehicles that would be good for the veterans? That's an option.
No, I don't think that's, I don't think, I don't think we have anything.
I think if we get, we get him a mileage off.
We ought to at least pay him mileage for taking veterans to doctor's appointments and taking, he had to take one to a federal court the other day. He does a lot of work. He shouldn't have to pay for his own mileage for holding county veterans.
I agree on where he should get paid the mileage. I'm just wondering where, where does it come from? But I do agree that he should get paid for the mileage at least, but the problem is where does it come from? I think that's why we're looking at, at getting my vehicle right now because it's not budgeted in there and it's hard just to get it from somewhere else. So I think that's the reason we're looking at a, at a vehicle right now.
Tom, is there any way of finding other funds we can find? Court discretion. Judge, let's table this till the next meeting.
Okay. Item number 13, discuss, approve, disapprove, entering into negotiations to purchase property in Gillette for county slash EMS facility. Graciously, landowner and myself have been working to look for a piece of property in Gillette for an EMS slash county building to provide some relief for panhandle residents up there. We identified a piece of property. I've gone and looked at it. Casey and I have sat down, looked at it and sat down with the, both county attorney and assistant county attorney and asked if this was the way to go forward with this. It's, it's early stages, but the landowner is, is, is excited about it. It is a, it's a good piece of property. It's not directly on the highway and it will, it will service, service county well, I believe.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I think Gillette's needed something out there. I know they're stuck way out there by themselves and I think it's time we've done something and provide some better services for all of our citizens in the community and the county.
Judge, I guess whenever you get fined, are you going to do environmental assessment and a regular site assessment of the area?
Survey, all of those things. I'll bring it all to you.
Like we did to put the Roden Bridge in, okay? Also, I know this isn't part of it, but I think if we're going to start, you know, which is like Commissioner Lissy says, is a great idea, but somewheres down the line, I think for future, we need to look at a building plan as well. Maybe getting somebody in to help us, guide us through all that for future projects.
We've got somebody.
Who?
Folks that designed the one in, in Nixon out of Gonzalez County. Been really successful.
Okay. And then also, well, it'll be later. Go ahead. Thank you.
I move that we approve entering into negotiations to purchase property in Gillette for county EMS facility.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, discuss, approve, disapprove, appointing Sandra Carter to replace Julie Braun on the Atascosa Area Advocates Public Defender's Office, AAPDO Board. Julie is no longer going to serve. She's served her term and Ms. Carter has graciously agreed to serve in place. She, she was Julie's alternate.
Make the motion to approve item number 14 as presented. I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15, acknowledged Texas Department of Motor Vehicles concluded annual inventory review on December 19th, 2023 of all license plates and place cards held in this county. They also completed a compliance review of the county's motor vehicle and tilting services, titling services, I'm sorry. No discrepancies were found. Tammy?
Good morning, towns everybody this morning. I just wanted to let y'all know that on December the 19th, the compliance officer for the TXDMV, the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, she was down at the office. She went through all the inventory, all the titles that we had on hand. She went through everything and she found no discrepancies. I just wanted to acknowledge that with, for the court. And she sent me that exit letter that I had sent to all of y'all that showed that there was no discrepancy.
Thank you, Tammy. Item number 16, consent agenda consists of reports from our county clerk, our district clerk, our courthouse maintenance and justice number ones.
I'm willing to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17, do we want to pull any of the reports? If not, we will move to item number 18 and have updates from our commissioners during precinct one.
Judge, Ben, we're talking about building. What about the retention building records placed? Have you made a decision or have you, has there any movement on that?
Yes, I talked to Tac Legal yesterday, or day before yesterday, today, sorry, last week. Asked about going to our locals, since we own the, I'm sorry, let me back up. I talked to Perry at DRG to make sure that we had, that we do own the plans that we paid for.
Do we?
I'm waiting on Perry to get back with me. Once we, once he gets back with me, he's pretty confident that we, the county, do own those plans. So whenever he gets back with me, Tac said that I can, or we can, we can go to our local contractors, present them with a set of plans, say, hey, bid this out. This is what we, we need. Have them bonded. They bid that into, into the, their pride and get our locals to build that. He said, Mr. Bristol told me that it's not uncommon. It's, it's actually very common for counties our size to do that.
Okay, Judge, I want to acknowledge James Lozalis and his family and Loopy and everybody there that during the cold spell, they donated 20 heaters and 20 blankets. And we, we passed most of them out during this last cold spell at the Methodist Church and people were coming into the office and asking for heaters and blankets. So we, we have maybe two or three left, but we, I want to thank James and his family for doing that. Also, on the emergency management side, I mean, Ms., and again, I had a discussion with Mrs. Morgan the other day about the election. She called and she was really asking a lot of questions and about the, the voting precincts in the Short Area, where the, it felt like they're not, they are being denied. And also, I, Friday, Sheriff, the generator up at the jail, the new, the other one is up. Okay, we, we got a gen, the gen, the main generator was down at the jail. And if we lost that generator, we would have lost everything in the jail. All the power would have gone out. The backup generator, they had lost a board. So we talked, we got a TEC out of, or TA, it out of Fafiris, you know, where they didn't work at the bank. We talked with them and they came in, brought us a CAT generator in and we ran it through the weekend case till our part came in. So we worked with that. I've talked with Devon's going to have, Devon Energy wants to have a drill. They're going to have, have meetings starting January 30th and then in February 27th. And then we'll have the drill on, on final time. Then it'd be on the 11th and the final, and the drill will be in Gillette area on March the 12th. Also, I've been talking with the National Weather Service to come down and put it on a sky worn class, which will be open to, I'm trying to get all the fire departments to respond so we can have it on at night. And it'd be open to all responders as well as the public. And I'm waiting on a date from them. Also, we can, I'm going to try to have another class when the daytime is possible. Again, Judge, I, did you ever hear anything from, I guess, what's that? The, the grant people about the GLO grant for the mitigation plan? Did you ever talk with them?
Judy texted me this morning and.
Did I send her email yesterday?
I'll, I'll get back with her.
Okay. Because that was Gonzalez got that, Gonzalez had just received their, I think their award.
The hazmat?
No, no, for the mitigation plan.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, for mitigation plan. Because it's going to expire in 25. And then again, broadband, there's, there's fixing to be a, I read an article the other day that there's a little big need for installers of fiber cable as well as fiber cable. And different colleges are starting to teach, teach the, how to install some of this, this fiber stuff. So that and also, I've been driving the roads, checking the drains and noticing a lot of signs aren't put up or down. They're not, they're knocked down. That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Precinct Two?
Well, last week, Commissioner Geisler and I attended a summit conference hosted by State Representative Ryan Mien. And it was worth going to. It was very informative. And I let Commissioner Geisler talk about some information that he was looking for. He got and had numerous calls about road signs, trash. Had one call about school bus picking up children, but that's between the parents and the school, not the county. And 229, County Road 229, finished the drainage, drainage and on the 194, we're ready to stabilize the, the base, but we're waiting for the weather conditions to improve before we do that. And Corn City Youth Livestock Show was a big success this year. I've heard that they set a new record on the sales this year for the money spent on the kids' projects. That, that's a good thing. And that's about it.
Mr. Lozalis?
It's kind of repetitive a lot of times. I answered my calls, dealt with all the issues, met with the business owner about an entrance on 298. Been back and forth checking the auditor's building, met with Commissioner Precinct Two about some issues on a county road in his precinct. Also, I've been asked about the small fire that happened here at the courthouse the other day. That, that day that it happened, I was called, I was called by my son Aaron. He said, hey, Dad, he goes, the lawn at the courthouse is on fire. So I rushed over here and when I got here, there was about three or four vehicles here. I took my fire extinguisher off the truck, jumped off the truck, ran here, cut it off on the corner, ran inside and my only, the determination I had was not to let it travel this way to the courthouse. So I was cutting the edge off and then the fire department got here. They did an excellent job. I wanted to thank the fire department, Corn City Fire Department. They cut it off quickly and the KCPD had to block, the roads blocked. I helped them block the roads and the sheriff's, the sheriff's department did great. There was a lot of deputies here. So we took care of all the issues promptly. There was no, no problem at all. I stayed here with the, the guys that fixed it to, to about midnight. Now, I did ask them what caused it. They weren't sure. I think the hop and the ground were both broken about at the same place. So they couldn't understand why that would have happened. There was no ice on them. There was nothing on them. I told them, what do y'all think it was? The only determination that we could think of, we found some ribbons, like balloon ribbons on the ground. And maybe, I, I didn't know that could happen, but they said that if a balloon ribbon, if you let a balloon up in the air and it busts, that ribbon that comes down, if it hits a wire like that, it'll bust both wires out and it could cause a fire. I didn't know that. And they said, I'm just letting the people know that because I didn't know that. I'm not a firefighter, but you know, a lot of people, he said, a lot of people don't know that. And when they let balloons up in the air, it's dangerous because when that, when that ribbon comes back down, if it contacts those electrical wires, it could bust them out and cause a fire at anybody's house, anyplace. So just wanted y'all to know that.
This is my law balloon, didn't it?
Yeah. Because we looked around the whole yard and also after, at midnight when they were done and I, I advised, I let the judge know that the electricity was back on. We walked through the whole yard, cleaned it all up and everything. I got them backed up out of there and everything was a success that night. Nothing major happened.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Geisler?
So I attended the South Texas Community Summit with Commissioner Lissy last week. Got quite a bit of information on kind of some economic development here and some departments up there that will be useful to us to, to reach out to. So he and I will both be reaching out to them going forward. I've actually spoken to some constituents concerning the voting station in Short Area, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Bush, and, and have made some plans with them along with Ms. Montalvo to go out around the first of February to, to visit them and their site and to try to get some, some issues addressed out there. Obviously thankful for the rain and Houston Street. We are waiting due to the rain on progress going forward there. That's it, Judge.
Thank you. Item number 19, discussion slash acknowledgement of personnel changes. This is out of all our departments. Okay, our new hires, none. Status change. Elections went, had a clerk go part-time to, part-time elections clerk to part-time deputy elections clerk. Okay? No resignations, no terminations. We are currently hiring sheriff patrol deputies. How many, we down, Dwayne? Nine? Still hiring nine deputies. Courthouse security. If you are looking for a nine to five, eight to five job, we are hiring courthouse security. It will not be patrol or anything like that. It will specifically be for courthouse security, the annex here and the tax office. So that's a good job. If you're interested in that, give Bonnie a call at HR and visit with her about that. Roden Bridge is hiring a make tech three. And that is our appointments report. Item number 20, payment of bills.
Okay, good morning, Court. I sent the bill list out on Friday. So our total bills for today is $532,899.96. Mostly all routine bills. Only things out of the norm is Texas War Development Grant Board. We got some bills for $164,600. Roden Bridge bills were $205,000 for the payroll, I mean, there's payroll cycle and then 141 for the general fund. I did want to point out, you know, we encourage ACH on all our vendors right now. We started doing that GOE, ACH out all their money. Criminal activity is on the rise. Criminal activity is on the rise. I got an email yesterday for us to change routing number and a bank number from one of our vendors. It went to the department, the department sent it to us. I looked at the ABA, I said, why would a local contractor want to do business with a bank in New York? Something didn't spell right. We reached out to the vendor, it was fraud. I'm giving it to the sheriff after the meeting today so they can investigate the emails. The contractor never knew about it because they added an extra letter in the email address, so it only went to the department. And then we reached out to, so just everyone be aware of the criminal activities going on on your bank accounts, don't make any changes, cause these guys are getting slicker and slicker by the minute, especially on your personal funds. So I just want to point that out. It could have been a nightmare, they've hit a lot of local governments, these people like this and we don't want to be a victim.
Judge, can I ask a question? Tom, on page ten of thirteen. The water development board grant, why is it that it shows work done six, sixteen, twenty-three and seven thirty, twenty-three? And that's, you know, and then you got the other one, it's ten, twenty-nine or twenty-three, which is in the current budget year, but the other two are not?
We were waiting for the bills from the engineer and my understanding it had to do with the retainage or something, Michelle was telling me. But I did get them to the auditor so they can get included in last year's audit.
Okay, so we took care of that.
So we will be working together with Michelle and then make sure we get the bills as well. And then, because we don't pay anything to judge signs it or any department head signs it, but at least we will have it.
Okay, thank you. Dwayne, do we have an elevator in the jail? How come we? Okay, that's for that, okay. Three hundred dollars to look at that.
The pain in the rear of that thing.
I'll move to pay the bills.
I'll second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed to that? Motion carries. Item number twenty-one, acknowledge commissioners court will meet on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four at nine AM here in the Karn County Historic Courtroom at one oh one North Tanbury Avenue, Suite two hundred, Karn City, Texas, seven eight one one eight. Item number twenty-two, need a motion to adjourn.
Judge, can I have one more, second?
Oh, I am so sorry, I'm sure I forgot some people on the day of the fire, but Renee was here also promptly, he brought the keys, we came into the courthouse, checked it, we checked the annex in the back, checked all the breakers, everything was good. Also, I wanted to thank the fire department, KCPD, my house here, three oh one North Park, caught on fire probably two weeks ago, something like that. I was called to the office, I came out here and one of the girls in the office called nine one one, so, excuse me. It was, it was pretty sad, I'm remodeling right now and the Karn City Fire Department came promptly, they cut it off really, really quick. I just wanted to thank everything, Jordan Buren was there, I want to thank you, sir, y'all did a great job, did a good job on cutting off the house. That, it only got to the front porch and it got all smoked up, but they did save the structure. Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
I'll move adjourn. Second.